Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'll have a student lead us in a moment of reflection. Following that, we'll have Ms. Karen Boudreaux lead us in the pledge. But a little bit about the student who will lead the reflection. Frank Harding. Frank is Raymond K. Smith Student of the Year. He is also a member of the Beta Club, robotics team, football team, baseball team, and track team. Frank enjoys helping others and leading by example. Frank, can you come up, please, and lead us in that reflection? And can everyone please stand?
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our board members tonight with wisdom as they make sound decisions that will affect the lives of future generations. Guard their hearts and minds and spirit of fairness so that they can make sound and innovative decisions on behalf of the students, parents, and employees of St. Charles Parish Public School System. I ask that you bless everyone that is in attendance as we strive to make St. Charles Parish Public Schools the best in the country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which I stand in the name of God, in the name of justice for all.
I call the meeting of the St. Charles Parish School Board to order for Wednesday, April 26. And for the record, let it show that all board members are in attendance, as well as our Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling and our Board Secretary Shelley Babino. The first item on agenda is item 2.01. It is National Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. And can I get Mr. Alexander to please read that?
2023 National Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas National Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 1949 to increase awareness of the importance of mental health and wellness. And whereas National Mental Health Awareness Month raises awareness of trauma and the impact it can have on the physical, emotional, and mental well-being of children, families, and communities. And whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illnesses begins by the age of 14. And whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and family today is fundamental to our children's future. And whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States and the second-leading cause among young adults. And whereas school-based mental health professionals recognize that early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas public education can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of children and families affected by mental illness. And whereas school-based mental health professionals, through their multi-tiered systems of support, serve and support the social-emotional wellness needs of students. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, in conjunction with the National Alliance of Mental Illness, hereby proclaim the month of May as National Mental Health Awareness Month in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and I motion to approve. I move to approve.
Second, a motion by Mr. Alexander, second by Mrs. Weber. Any board discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to ask that Ms. Jerry Smith, Executive Director of Child Welfare, Attendants, and Student Services, to come forward and say a few words, as well as to recognize those mental health professionals before the vote.
Good evening, board members and superintendent, and thank you for the privilege to say a few words in recognition and on behalf of our phenomenal school-based school mental health professionals. More and more, our children arrive to school with two backpacks, one that stores their school supplies and another that stores their emotions, trauma, anxiety, social-emotional, and mental health needs. Our St. Charles Parish Public Schools' mental health professionals serve as our trauma clinicians. They facilitate behavioral health universal screening for approximately 6,000 3rd through 12th grade students and provide multi-tiered interventions and supports driven by that screening data. They have made major strides to infuse our schools with critical and vital social-emotional wellness supports and interventions for students, and they even support our staff. Their clinical-trauma expertise has supported our district's vision to build a responsive, school-based mental health program that supports the development of foundational social-emotional learning competencies. This special team of clinicians have worked diligently assessing and providing interventions to our students who have been impacted by trauma and other adverse childhood experiences to ensure that all of our students reach their full academic, social, and emotional potentials. Tonight, mental health professionals, we thank you for your social-emotional first aid that you entirely administer. As I call out your names, would you please come forth for a group picture? Brittany Wright. Jamie Mason. Marquita George. Tamika Jasmine. Gabriella Bork. Sherri Ward. Kristy Jackson. Before we take our picture, we actually have some Mental Health Month awareness bracelets for our board members and superintendent, and we ask that you would please consider wearing them during the month of May.
Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that proclamation is adopted. Next on the agenda is 2.02, the 2023 National School Nurses Week proclamation. And Mr. Gregson, can you please read that for us?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, it'd be a pleasure. 2023 National School Nurses Week proclamation. Whereas students are the future and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they're at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care. And whereas school nurses are vital members of school-based teams. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning, and they're in position to make a positive difference for children every day. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years. And whereas the turbulent medical crisis of recent years has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, in conjunction with the National Association of School Nurses, hereby proclaim May 6 through the 12th, 2023, as School Nurses Week in the St. Charles Parish Public School System. I move that we approve this proclamation.
Second. So I had a motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any board discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to invite Ms. Jerry Smith, Executive Director of Student Services and Child Welfare and Attendants, to the podium to say a few words about our wonderful nurses.
Thank you again, Superintendent Ortland and board members. Again, it is a privilege for me to be able to say a few words of recognition on behalf of our most dedicated and committed school nursing team. Each year, it is an honor for me to recognize our school nurses. This evening, I'm especially honored for an opportunity to once again recognize them as our dedicated St. Charles Parish Public Schools' healthcare professionals. We have many nursing positions actually in their ranks this evening. They include our Supervisor of Student Health Services, our Specialty Services Nurse, School Nurses, and School Nurse Paris. This dedicated St. Charles Parish Public Schools' healthcare professional team go above and beyond to provide first-class care and support to our students and even provide support to staff in emergency situations. We celebrate and honor you tonight, school nursing team, for the significant contributions you make every day to improve the safety, health, and academic success of all students. School nurses were once seen as the ones who only issued Band-Aids and gave out ice packs. However, we have come to recognize that our school nursing team plays a vital role providing intensive care to our special needs students while also maintaining the health and wellness of the overall school community. Additionally, our school nurses have completed more than 8,000 hearing and vision screenings for our students while simultaneously providing the satellite center healthcare exploration students a hands-on internship experience. Each and every day, our St. Charles Parish Public School Nurses team navigate absolutely unimaginable challenges to provide top-level medical care that allows all students to thrive in the school environment. Again, we thank you for your service, and as I call your name, please come forward for a group picture. Aralyn Honor. Melissa Byrd. Keelye Brown. Chrissy Rockefeller. Jessica Hanneman. Latonya Pierre. Sharla Brooks. Lisa Brown. Rachel Dufresne. Sonya Robinson. Nicole Shulon.
Is there any other board discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that proclamation is adopted. Next is 2.03. We have a resolution in memory of Mr. Edward "Kid" Jordan. And Mr. John Smith, could you please read that for us?
We have to do that, Mr. President, particularly since Mr. Jordan was... Resolution in memory of Edward "Kid" Jordan. Whereas Mr. Edward "Kid" Jordan served as a music educator in St. Charles Parish Public Schools for 18 years. And whereas Mr. Jordan began his formal teaching career at Bethune High School on September 6, 1955. And whereas Mr. Jordan retired in 2006 after 34 years at Southern University at New Orleans as head of the Jazz Studies Program. And whereas Mr. Jordan is acclaimed internationally as an improvisist saxophonist, having performed and recorded with Lena Horne, Frank Sinatra, Aretha Franklin, Gladys Knight, Ray Charles, Stevie Wonder, The Temptations, Fat Domino, R.E.M. And whereas Mr. Jordan has received numerous accolades, including being recognized by the French government in 1985 as a knight of the order of the arts and letters, the nation's highest honor, being selected as the first recipient of Offbeat Magazine's Lifetime Achievement Award for Music Education, being highlighted on CBS 60 Minutes, and being named a Jazz Hero by the Jazz Journalists Association in 2013. Therefore be it resolved that St. Charles Parish Public School Board herein express to the family of the late Edward "Kid" Jordan that sincere sympathy in this time of sorrow and therefore... And be it further resolved that a page be set aside in the April 26, 2023 minute books as in honor of Mr. Jordan. I move approval.
So a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that resolution is adopted, and we'll mail a copy to Mr. Jordan's family. Next up on the agenda is 3.01. It is Board and Superintendent's recognition. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the Public Information Department for this recognition.
Students. School system students were named to the All District Soccer First Team. Destrehan High School, Alyssa Vicas. Faith Leveque. Faith was also named Offensive Most Valuable Player. Hope Berg. Honville High School, Alan Dugah. Brendan Kenny. Dylan Patterson. Kayla Martin. Kayla was also named Overall District Most Valuable Player. Luke Falls. Owen Fontana. Destrehan High School students scored a 36 on the ACT. Ava Rockefeller. Hanville High School employees were named District Soccer Coaches of the Year. Hanville High School employee received the Shell Urban Science Educator Development Award and was the grand prize winner in the high school level in the Shell Science Lab Regional Challenge at the 2023 National Science Teaching Association Meeting, Cecilia Gillam. Satellite Center employee was named the 2023 Louisiana Pro Start Educator of Excellence by the Louisiana Restaurant Association Education Foundation, Chef Patrick Felon. Groups. J.B. Martin Middle School softball team went undefeated and placed first in the Louisiana State Junior High Softball Tournament. Coach Michelle Lee and the students can come up for a picture. Hanville High School J.R.T.C. placed first in Armed Individual and third in Unarmed Exhibition, Unarmed Regulation, Armed Tandem, and Armed Exhibition at the Louisiana State University Pershing Rifles Invitational Drill Competition. Albert Cammon Middle School and Luling Elementary Schools were recognized by the Louisiana Department of Education for increasing the percentage of students scoring Master and Above and decreasing the percentage of students scoring Unsatisfactory in both Math and English Language Arts on statewide assessment.
Just a few brief words. This is probably, as a board member, some of my favorite moments when we can honor employees and students and so forth for the extra things and the accolades that they get. So enjoy tonight, and thank you for coming, and we're going to take a short recess to allow you to leave. Unless you want to stay for the business portion of the meeting, you can, but if not, we'll take about a five-minute break to allow you to leave. Thank you. Okay, so we'll resume our meeting. First business item is 4.01, and that is the Board Meeting Minutes.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? And that is approved. Next item is 4.02, the purchase of Head Start Medical Insurance. Head Start is responsible for maintaining medical coverage for the payment of medical expenses of a child while injured during school. Head Start has not previously carried this policy, however, the purchase of this policy is required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the purchase of the Head Start Medical Insurance with Great American Insurance Company at a cost range of $1,090 to $1,475.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion?
Just one quick question. The insurance of the Head Start program is required, and that's required by, what, the state or the federal government?
Federal.
And the dollars for covering the premium, is that allocated within the budget?
We hadn't previously allocated, but we will moving forward, sir.
Right, but what I'm saying, so the dollars, though, to cover the premium is covered within the allocation that comes for the Head Start budget?
So Ms. Weber, would you like, we do have Ms. Nikki Weber here, Administrator of the Head Start program, but it was, from what I understand, we do receive funds for the federal Head Start program?
Correct.
But we also supplement a portion of the Head Start program, so perhaps Ms. Weber can just provide a little bit of clarification from that standpoint, please.
Hey, good evening, yes. The regulations are through Bulletin 137, which is through our State Department, and currently, when we ask for the funds through the school district, it was not included in that, but it will be in the future.
I'm just trying to find out if this is another unfunded mandate that, on top of other unfunded mandates, that we have to deal with, particularly given the fact that we are in a fiscal session of the legislature right now, and there are going to be a number of things that are being tossed around with regard to finance that will impact school district budgets.
So Ms. Weber, I know you mentioned the bulletin that was in, it was a State Department Regulation. Can you maybe describe a little bit more of the evaluation that the Head Start program undertook that identified that as an insurance that we had to carry?
Yeah, so we get monitored monthly through the State Department, so our monitoring representative came out to the East Bank Head Start and reviewed all of our documents and noticed that we currently have our insurance as secondary, and according to the bulletin, we have to provide that insurance for all of our Head Start students, any students that are in those buildings that are under a Type III licensing, and at this time, we have only our Head Start students that have a Type III license. So this would be an additional funding requirement through the State Department.
I guess Mr. Smith is correct that, you know, they're requiring us to have it, and they expect us to pay for it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And that item passes. Next up is 4.03, which is the request for qualifications for student accident insurance broker. The Risk Management Department solicits brokers for a student accident insurance broker on a three-year cycle. This is a newly established cycle that will begin in year 2023. In order to receive the most qualified brokerage services, St. Charles Parish Public School is seeking qualifications from firms to provide student accident insurance brokerage services from 2023 to 2026. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for qualifications for a student accident insurance broker.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion?
Except to say that this is not an unfunded mandate that the board, this board elected to cover the cost of student insurance because we have student athletes and students and all different kinds of activities, and we felt that when individual students got injured, it should not have been an expense on the parents of those children, that it was a school activity they were involved in, so we cover that cost.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item is approved. Next is 4.04. It's Request for Qualification Performance Bonds Broker. The Risk Management Department solicits brokers for performance bonds broker on a three-year cycle. This is a newly established cycle that will begin this year. In order to receive the most qualified brokerage services, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is seeking qualifications from firms to provide performance bond brokerage services from 2023 to 2026. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the request for qualifications for a performance bonds broker.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? And that item is approved. Next is 4.05, Request for Qualifications for Excess Workers' Compensation Insurance. The Risk Management Department solicits brokers for excess workers' compensation insurance on a three-year cycle. This is a newly established cycle. In order to receive the most qualified brokerage services, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is seeking qualifications from firms to provide excess workers' compensation insurance brokerage service from 2023 to 2026. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
I move to approve the request for qualifications for excess workers' compensation insurance.
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? And that item is approved. Next item is 4.06, Safe Schools Additional Resource Offices. In order to enhance the district's safety and security program, administration recommends adding additional school resource offices. A Safe Schools update was prevented with information regarding this item and was reviewed during executive session of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the requests for additional school resource officers at an approximate cost of $215,000.
Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
Nothing except to say that for the benefit of the public, that all of the resource officers that we have in the school district are supplied by the sheriff's office, meaning that they have the full authority of a police officer and not like some school district that might outsource with security companies and so forth. In the discussion we had last Monday night, I thought the sheriff's department made it quite clear what the advantages and disadvantages of having certified sheriff officers as opposed to security companies providing security, because the security companies, they have no arrest powers and other kinds of things, and actually, they can, in fact, cause the district some liability in the event that they would try to put their hands on a child or break up a fight and injure a child. So having sheriff's officers is an advantage for us. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? And that item is approved. Next item is 4.07, Revision to 5.4.1 Policy and Procedure. Selection and adoption of textbooks and instructional materials this is the first reading. Upon review of the Board's Policy and Procedures 5.4.1, Selection and Adoption of Textbooks and Instructional Materials, revisions were necessary to align policy and procedure. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting of the Board of Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with Goal A of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the revisions to Board Policy and Procedure 5.41, Selection and Adoption of Textbooks and Instructional Materials for a first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Weber, a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? And that item is approved. Next is 4.08. It's the committee and school board meeting scheduled for the 2023-24 school year. Administration is requesting adoption of the schedule of committee and board meetings for the 2023-24 school year in April in order to allow the schools adequate time in planning calendars. Expedient adoption of the schedule of committee and board meetings will allow the setting of advertising and bidding dates on new projects in addition to buildings being transacted in a timely fashion. Also, this will permit the development of school system calendars and will further our efforts of communicating board activities to the public. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the schedule of committee and board meetings for July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. Being none, please cast your vote. And the Board has adopted the schedule for next year. Okay, next is 4.09, Revision to Policy 3.6.3 Expense Reimbursement, and this is for the first reading. Upon review of the Board's Policy 3.6.3 Expense Reimbursement, revisions were required to align the policy to the updated Procedures Manual. This agenda item is reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the revisions to Board Policy 3.6.3 Expense Reimbursement for a first reading.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 4.10, it's personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective function in the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item is reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to receive the personnel items as presented to the Board.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to just take a moment to recognize Dr. David Scheck Snyder, who has been selected as the next Executive Director of Secondary Schools. Welcome to our team.
Mr. President, I would just like to add that I reluctantly received these simply because of him. We loved having him at Harry Hurst Middle School, but we're going to enjoy having him here with us on Wednesday nights now.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item is adopted. Next is 4.11, Proposal Acceptance Online Learning Platform. An online learning platform is utilized by several programs, including Performance Base, Distance Learning, and programs at U.J. Landers Senior Educational Program Center. Software learning platforms are reviewed every five to seven years. The purpose of this, of the review is to guarantee alignment to the curriculum, maintain a high level of student engagement, ensure ease of use, negotiate cost-effective pricing, and explore current trends in technology. Proposals were received from four vendors for the online learning platform. Proposals were received and evaluated by a committee of teachers, students, district staff, and a board member. After scoring the proposals, Imagine Learning is the recommended vendor for the online learning program. This item was reviewed at the Technology Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with goals A and C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to accept a proposal from Imagine Learning for an online learning platform.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mr. Cody. Any discussion?
I'd just like to mention that this was very in-depth and thorough process that was, took about several weeks, and commend Ms. Dyb and Ms. Hagel for facilitating that and bringing in the staff and the students who essentially provided this the best feedback that we could have, so that we have a process and a platform for all to use, so the people using it gave feedback.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gregson. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that proposal is adopted. Our next is 4.12, Bid Acceptance for Janitorial Supplies. In order to have the quality products at the best price, the distribution center sought bids for janitorial supplies. The bid opening was held on Friday, March 31, 2023. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we accept the bids for janitorial supplies as recommended at an approximate cost of $584,000.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes unanimously. Next, 4.13, Accounts Payable for the Month of March 2023. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customly paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, April 24, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of March 2023 in the total amount of $7,138,502.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item is approved, so we can pay our bills. Okay. Next is 5.01, which is Standing Committee Reports. Anyone, a chair or any member of a committee, like to give a report on their committee meetings this past week, please do so.
Sure, Mr. President. The Technology Committee met on Monday, April 24, a very busy day for a Technology Committee, which includes Ms. Becky Weber, Mr. Scott Cody, and myself. We had two primary items that were discussed. One was item 4.11, that we just approved, the online learning platform, and the other, we reviewed proposals for a new district and school website, which will be finishing up that process here hopefully in the next few weeks, and that concludes the Technology Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee met Monday, April 24, and that committee consists of Mr. John Smith, Mr. Ray Gregson. There were three items discussed, all of which were moved to the agenda and voted on this evening, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee consisted of myself, Mr. Alexander, and Mrs. Boudreau met on Monday, April 24, and we covered three items. Two of those items came to the full Board during this meeting and were approved. Those two items were the bid acceptance for janitorial supplies, as well as the accounts payable for the month of March 2023. We had a third item that was for committee discussion only, and that item was that the, our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Ronald White, provided to the committee and the Board an update on our ongoing salary study, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Mr. President, the, on Monday, April 24, 2023, the Capital Improvement Committee met, and the members are myself, Mr. Sufferin, and yourself. We had one item on our agenda, and it pertained to additional staffing and the layout, utilization of our resource offices at our schools, and because of the sensitive nature of the information that was discussed and disseminated, we met in executive session for the first time ever, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
The Transportation Committee did not meet, sadly.
The Legislative Committee met on last Monday. We received a report from the Board lobbyists in Baton Rouge regarding the bills that are before the legislature at this time. The superintendent is tracking certain bills that are before the legislature at this time, along with various staff members, and will continue to update the Board with regard to the status of those bills. The superintendent also informed the Board that there will be a St. Charles Parish Day at the legislature, and that the Board, Board members are invited to participate in that St. Charles Parish Day at the legislature. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
The Curriculum and Instruction Assessment Committee met on April 24, 2023. Members included myself, Mr. John Smith, and Mr. Ray Gregson. There was one agenda item, and that item was approved tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. The Risk Management and Insurance Committee also met. We had our monthly legal update. We also discussed the purchase of Head Start Insurance, was brought to the table tonight and approved, and we also had the three requests for qualifications that were also approved tonight, and the Risk Management and Insurance Committee is myself, Mr. Sufferin, and Ms. Boudreau, and that concludes my report. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Whortley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hanvo High School's graduation will be held Wednesday, May 17, 2023. Destrehan High School's graduation will be held Thursday, May 18, 2023. Both ceremonies will be at the Ponchatrain Center for 6:00 p.m. Hanvo High School's Ring Night Ceremony will be held at the L-PAC on Monday, May 1, at 6:00 p.m. Destrehan High School's Ring Night Ceremony will be held at the L-PAC on Wednesday, May 3, at 6:00 p.m. St. Charles Parish Public Schools will host our annual Teacher Job Fair on Friday, April 28. While the nation is experiencing critical shortage of teachers, and Louisiana school systems are also experiencing the same, 128 candidates are attending the job fair this year. Since all interview slots have been filled, and we continue to receive applications for potential positions, principals will later interview additional teachers who continue to apply for potential teaching positions for the 23-24 school year. We thank the Board for recognizing the importance of our teachers and ensuring they are amongst the highest compensated in the state, as this is critical for recruiting and retaining this highly qualified workforce. Spring testing. Each spring, the Louisiana Department of Education administers assessments known as LEAP 2025 in grades three through eight. Students in grades three through eight will take computer-based LEAP 2025 assessments. The LEAP 2025 will be administered beginning May 5 through May 12. Schools will send their testing schedules as the testing dates draw near. High school students enrolled in LEAP courses will take these assessments May 15 through the 17. All high school students not taking LEAP assessments will participate in asynchronous learning on these days. More information will be communicated by the high schools. Please contact your child's school for further information relative to LEAP 2025 assessments and their schedules. Athletic updates. The Hanvo High School softball team was named District 75A champion with an overall record of 17 and 13. They were seeded number 16, headed into the playoffs, and were defeated by Ponchatula High School in the first round. Destrehan High School baseball team was named the District 75A champion with an overall record of 23 and 10. They were seeded number 14 in the state playoffs and defeated Ruston High in the first round and will travel to Suffer High for the second round of the playoffs. The Hanvo High School baseball team finished the regular season with a 19-11 record and were seeded number 16 headed into the playoffs. They were defeated by Fountain Blue High School in the first round of the playoffs. The Destrehan High Boys Tennis Team finished the season with four qualifiers for the state tournament, with one boys' doubles team finishing second in regionals. The Hanvo High Boys and Girls Tennis Teams finished the season as district champions. Additionally, the Boys Team finished as regional champions, while the Girls finished third in our region. Several players competed at the state tournament this past week. The Destrehan High Boys Track Team was named the District 75A champions, while the Girls' Track Team placed third in district. Both the Boys and Girls Track Teams from Hanvo High School finished second in the district track meet, and they competed in the regionals. Both teams competed in regionals meet today, April 26. The Girls Golf Team from Hanvo High played in the regionals this week as well. As of today, due to Hurricane Ida, we have incurred a total of $50,897,567. We are projecting future costs to be approximately $4.1 million, including $3.6 million for large construction projects, and .1 million for smaller projects. We've received $37,471,565 in insurance payments thus far. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Whortley.
I move to adjourn.
Second. So I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any objection? If no one objects to adjourn, we stand adjourned.